I don't think that's the meeting.
Okay, we've made a motion to start the meeting at seven oh one. Do I have a second? All in favor? So, we have three sets of minutes to approve. So, the largest one is the March twenty sixth meeting. Anybody have anything that they wanted to add, change, or check?
Is this the one where there was the confusion with?
Oh, did I fix?
The state, I don't know, that's what I brought up.
The state aid versus the um.
Right, is this the one?
Well, the way you have it is the way you said told me this was true.
Yeah. Could you do it differently, Kathy, on the annual appeal? We were saying what was coming from state aid and what was coming from?
Uh, the state aid was any remainder of the media that wasn't raised in the annual appeal, although it just didn't.
So, did I do it backwards?
So, it was state aid, the annual appeal, and the um.
And the trust money?
Trust money for the Sheldon.
So, is that the way I have it right in the minutes? I have it backwards.
You have it backwards, yeah, that's why I. Natalie had called me and said.
Yeah, that's.
This is the trust funds. Okay, so, um, trust money, that might be changed.
Trust funds.
And this is trust. Now, can I do this?
No.
So, for Carlos, the additional money needed will come from?
State aid.
State aid.
Okay.
Anything over the, beyond the.
Oh, the annual coverage.
From trust funds.
And then, so then the bookshelves is coming from the trust funds.
Yeah, the trust.
That's why it's a good idea to have this.
It was spread out among a few trust funds.
Televised, so if there's any problem, we can check back with that. I think this is a great idea.
And actually, but that.
Natalie, if you can hear anything from the invoice for those shelves here?
Oh, no, the Sheldon hasn't even arrived yet. It's gonna take six to eight weeks.
Okay.
Well, I guess it's been about a month since I ordered them. So, they should be coming along soon.
That's right.
Yeah.
I'll keep my eyes out for any of those.
Okay. And actually, that's a good point. So, the meeting is being televised, so that's my job to tell everybody. And maybe we should go through the who we are again, I'm Beth Burton, Chair of the Board of Trustees, and.
I'm Barbara Gobin, the Treasurer.
Kathy Fernian.
Larry Lutland, Secretary.
Anne Marie Wilson Crockett.
Natalie Hardy, Library Director.
Carlos Agostio.
Trustee. And Laurel Peholsky, Trustee.
Okay, so with that change on March twenty sixth, um.
Which we can't change now, this is a meeting.
Um, can we have an approval, uh, motion to approve the minutes, or is there anything else?
Can I ask a question about the minutes?
Um, actually, the, I would prefer that nobody speak from the audience, and um.
Does it take a vote on that?
No.
Part of open meeting law.
In fact, I have a question right here.
It says that we can, but we need to be recognized by the chair.
Recommended by the Chair. And I'm choosing.
Hopefully, everybody on the TV hears that, that they're not allowing public comment. Thank you. My name's Doreen, please. Thank you.
And from now on, I'm gonna ask that everybody be silent. Thank you. Um, so we have that change.
Um, I make a motion to accept the minutes with changes.
Me.
I'll second.
This is for the twenty sixth?
On the twenty sixth.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we have the March thirty first minutes. So, does anybody have any changes on March thirty first?
Was it?
I don't know.
Oh, I actually, I wasn't there on that either, so I just asked that.
Okay. And, uh, any other changes? Uh, can I have a motion to accept the minutes? Uh, what, Carlos?
Uh, on the, um, grants piece, I thought it was the board asked Natalie to.
Well, the board did, the Don asked as well, but we don't, we don't give up, right, we don't give up grant money.
Yeah, he, he brought it up, brought it up, and we, and we seconded that motion.
Yeah, John, John, yeah, Don.
And Don asked.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, can I have a motion to accept March thirty first?
I can't, right, 'cause I wrote them, so I can't make a motion, right?
Just second.
No, I can't make a motion.
You can make a motion.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the thirty first as.
And I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Staying because you didn't there.
I wasn't there.
Um, so we have March, uh, April fifteenth meeting. And that was a short and sweet meeting. I don't think there's anything needs to be changed. Anybody see anything?
No. No, I make a motion to accept the minutes of April fifteenth.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, so, uh, under correspondence, Denise left in our box, um, that every member should get a copy of the, um, Premium Assistance Under Medicaid and Children's Health Insurance Program Act. Um, I'm not really sure why, but Natalie said you guys have all gotten a copy of that.
Oh, yeah.
So, just following instructions so that everybody.
She realized we're out paid.
I think, I hope so.
We have to keep a copy aside for Jen as well.
Okay. And, um.
Are you doing that or mine?
Hmm?
Are you doing that or mine?
I got mine.
Oh, all right, then I'll just do that.
Was there anything back from the selectmen on the winter snow policy?
I haven't.
I didn't get it out yet. I apologize.
Put that on for next week.
Yep.
And, um.
This is all.
Yes. And the other correspondence that we passed out, um, March twenty sixth, um, I checked with the Director of Finance and confirmed that really is not a trustee matter, so we can, uh, drop that. So, you know, in the letter.
Do you have a chance now?
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's how it was all prepared like.
Yeah, so, end of discussion, and no need to play that game. So, anything else under correspondence, anybody?
Well, we have the letter we talked about giving to staff. Would that come on the correspondence?
Yeah.
Do you want it?
So, we were just trying to, um, you know, let everybody know that, um, just Natalie resigning and then, um, um, Suzie resigning, that we just wanted to let them know that we, you know, we're supporting them and, you know, we're getting, uh, moving forward with an interim and, um, that the trustees are available if they wanna, um, pass anything through us, to us.
I just did one for everybody and did like a blue pen, so that would be personal to everybody, so if you wanna sign each one, that would go to each staff member.
So, we should just.
Okay.
Okay, well, we can do that elsewhere, yeah, that's what I wanted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. I think I'll have to wait till I sign it, because I can't talk until.
Well, can we go, is there any other correspondence? Can I do this?
Yep.
Because if not, why don't we take a look at the Director's Report, what you're saying.
There you go.
That's a good idea.
Thank you. It's a little bit long.
Yeah, if everybody's all right with that letter, obviously, if there's any, you know, want any changes, I would recommend.
Okay.
Looks like the, um, gap, group and gathers to read programs are doing, was, were doing very well, good, good numbers, good turnout.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, all around, you know, checkouts were up for March, um.
Yeah.
There's a blue pen, there's.
More people in the building, and I think a lot of, we had a lot of snowstorms in January, February, so I think our numbers dipped a little bit in January, February, and then we just came off asleep. Weather approval was at March.
Just people not coming out.
Very definitely. Natalie, I have a question about the cost of some of the programs.
Mm-hmm.
Is, are those average, average costs written? Because I did some, you know, well, Griffin J math, and some of these things, um, I mean, is it author David Sift?
With eight, seventeen eighty-six per person.
Is that like normal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, you know, again, there's an, there's an evidence law.
Right.
And sometimes, you know, things are, like, you know, you have forty, you know, thirty-five, forty people in the room, and you have, it's a little bit more intimate, um, and, uh, you can, that's usually what you'll see as a, as a variety, and that's why we try to get as many free programs as possible.
Yeah, exactly. We had quite a few free ones, I see.
Yeah, free is really good, yeah. Twelve years is like, it's such a hit movie, and it all happened in great, at the same time, it's.
So, Natalie, is there, you know, how do you, how do we learn that, like, you know? What, I mean, is there like, you know, knowing from experience? I mean, is that something you know from experience?
Yes.
Okay, versus, you know, there's not any report that MBLC puts out that?
Uh, yeah, they, um, MBLC does not, um, track the cost, and it, the cost, they track attendance, but they don't track the cost of programs that libraries put on. That's an individual library by library tracking.
How are we able to have a good programs because we raise money through the, um, the annual appeal, and everything with the book and bacon, but all silent auctions, it goes to programming, so we can keep our state aid and the whole place. It goes into, it goes into the donation account in March for the program.
Um, I was looking at the, the March business, it, it didn't, that seemed to be on par.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But that weather wasn't so bad, and I also saw, like, I calculated of the book sale, books cart sales, so it's like three hundred and twenty bucks, that was, you know, good too, so I think that was a good addition to the process.
Uh-huh, yeah. And we still had April to add in for that year, we're not at the end of April yet, so that counts towards book sales.
Yeah.
And for programming.
I know we started adding the museum passes, but I don't have a feel for, um, I didn't look back to see how many, whether that's growing or not growing or stagnant.
March, yeah, it's about, about the same, yeah.
How do they, how do they go out for, um, April vacation?
Off for a bit.
Really? Yeah.
I was gonna say, March, there were no days off.
When you're out of school.
Yeah.
No, but the pass that we dropped, have you had anybody ask for it since we dropped it?
Yeah.
And what's the one that, is it normal in the aquarium that's not in the summer?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's winter only, not in the summer.
Yeah, I think July and August it stops. I don't know whether about June, but at least, I know for sure July and August.
And it's not. Yes. Isn't it a discount rather than a free pass?
Lots of them are discount, lots of them now are discounts versus free passes.
Right, right, okay.
And the other question I, what, um, did I ask this last month? I think I might have. Um, any, any kind of question is a reference question besides directional, right?
Pretty much, yeah. If it involves part of our, either our physical collection or our electronic databases, we've downloaded audio books or downloadable ebooks, um, they're counted as reference questions.
Yeah. Excellent.
Other question on the budget. Oh, okay.
Got a separate document.
I just, I was looking at the, you know, where we are percentage wise to the end of the month, and it looked like we're gonna be fine. Who's gonna be doing book ordering and stuff? Is that all just gonna happen?
Um, I'm, as far as the, the collection development that I'm responsible for and that Suzie's responsible for, um, we're in the process of kind of trying to wrap that up, um, before we, before we go, and the adult fiction that Diana selects is pretty much completely expended because we have.
They're not gonna.
We have standing orders where they send us two copies of, you know, the, the newest James Patterson, and that, you know, that eats up a lot of that money, so, um, we're working to really take care of that earlier rather than later.
So, you'll, you'll finish out the fiscal year?
Pretty much, and there'll be, there'll be very, very little left to, to expand as far as, um.
Yeah, it's a hundred percent, it's only ten percent.
Yep.
Now, I know in past years, we've had to use some, some trust money to buy some additional books to make sure that we meet our quotas for state aid and all that. Are we gonna be in that condition this year? Can you tell?
I think we're gonna be okay, yeah, um.
We'll meet the nineteen percent.
Uh, you know, especially the first year I came on board, there had been a period of time when there wasn't as much ordering going on.
Right, yeah.
Um, and, uh, that wasn't the case last year, and it certainly wasn't the case here, you know, we just kept right, kept right on it.
Was it nineteen percent?
Nineteen percent.
Nineteen point, what is it, nineteen point two or nineteen point six, like, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Of the total.
And there's always a little wiggle room, uh.
Of the total budget?
Total. Total everything.
Total everything.
Not our budget, but the town budget.
No. Well, it's total.
It's the mini, it's the total of what we receive from the town, including salaries.
Municipal budget.
Exactly.
What we receive from the town, yeah.
Yeah, to the salaries now, not just that, a couple of years.
Moving salaries, that's the kicker.
Yeah, that's the kicker.
Yeah.
So, Diana knows the process going forward, or?
Which process is that?
Like ordering books, or?
Yeah, she orders books on a monthly basis.
And who will be doing, like, the report?
Uh, the Director's Report. I trained Diana on that, um, last week, yeah.
And then there'll be an interim as well.
And she knows how to run the budget report?
Yes, yeah.
It's a spreadsheet looking number, so.
Okay, we don't have to vote.
No, we don't.
Um, is there anything else on the Director's Report that, anybody have a question on?
I love the way you have organized it. It's different than, I mean, each time that the Director's Report has gotten more detailed, I think.
Hopefully, it doesn't put you to sleep.
Well, I know.
I think it, uh, or maybe attached to the Director's Report would be the scheduling for May. Um, I asked Natalie, she sent the schedule for May, um, and the total number of hours for everybody. Um, so one of the things is, you know, um, is we have to be careful of not putting, uh, people over, uh, the total number of hours that they're scheduled to work, that puts them close to full-time status. So, um, you know, the Director of Finance was suggesting to me that it could be, you know, an occasional week or two to go over, but our goal would be to keep everybody as close to their normal amount of hours as soon as possible. So, uh, getting the interim in as fast as we can will help. Um, they, uh, Natalie, I always, so the people that work on Saturday don't work on Friday.
That's generally the case, um, you know.
Okay, yeah, because I see Lauren is doing it back to back.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's gonna have to, unfortunately, it's gonna have to happen.
Because, uh, because of such staffing.
Yeah.
Yeah, after the, so, where Suzie is.
I mean, you can, there's, there's also the option of, um, if, if, if this is still too, too much of a skeleton crew, um, Bibliotense is available for all positions, not just Director's, so, um, there's always that option if this starts to feel a little too, you know, too little.
So, anything left in our budget goes back to the town, it doesn't carry over into the next fiscal year.
And we can move anybody's, the budget, uh, salary lines back and forth, so if we have more money in one salary line, it's all together, they can move, uh, easily. And I do recall that, um, we usually hire a, um, a summer, somebody to summer help for, uh, summer programs, which.
We fund that out of state aid.
Yeah. Which is actually on the, on the agenda a little further down, so do we wanna talk about that now, since we've?
Sure, sure.
So, summer programs and interim information. So, let me just tell you what happened with the Director, uh, interim situation. So, based on the budget of what we have left in the Director line, we can only afford twenty-five to twenty-seven hours. And I do wanna say, I made a mistake last time. I said Natalie was making twen, thirty-seven dollars an hour, but that's based on, um, uh, misinformation or the total number that I had, which divided it, isn't really true. So, it's thirty dollars an hour and fifty cents. Um, so, um, that's a little bit, it's interesting that it's only from twenty-seven dollars an hour in two thousand and six, when we were hiring an interim, and it's up to thirty, that's not a whole lot.
How many has been back?
Yeah, and, um, the other thing that I was suggesting is, based on the staffing, do we want to have the interim Director here more than twenty, staff twenty-five to twenty-seven hours? Um, and if we do, we're gonna have to take the money from state aid to, uh, supplement that budget line, which is allowable from state aid.
Now, you're talking between now and July first? Because July first is a new year.
Yes, yes, from now to July first.
June, June. So, really, it's just for May and June, okay.
But ba, but basically, we wouldn't be able to get more than that anyway, because that's, you know, that's a month, a salary, it's two months. Because it's, you know, the twenty-eighth of, of April.
Yeah, so Natalie's working thirty-seven, and this interim, we're only be able to work twenty-five.
To twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Oh, up to twenty-seven, so it's ten hours a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that we're down. So, it's just something to think about, why we, why we, um, and we finished the contract, and I, um, I was waiting to have our meeting today before I had another contact with the Bibliotense Agency to see whether we could say for sure whether we were gonna increase the amount of time.
So, do we have the funds since day eight to support twenty hours for the two month one?
I mean, ten, ten more hours.
Ten more hours a week.
Well, it does eat up a lot of state aid, but.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we have it, but we've got nineteen thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars.
Yeah, nineteen thousand three hundred and ninety-five seventy-one. So, we do have enough in there, and the reason why we have actually enough in there is because we have rolled it over, um, not spent it down every time.
And that's the line that we were able to roll.
Yes, and that, and, and it's very flexible, uh, what it can cover.
Yes. And that's where state, where summer help would come for the six weeks, six weeks in.
Correct.
Now, has it, I forget what her name is, but she, she contacted the library?
Chris, I think, Chris, you did.
She actually has, she graduated from, um, college last year, and she has a pretty good gig in Cambridge, so she spends most of her time getting to and from work and then being at work.
Wow, so it's done.
Wow.
But we have a couple of other, um, college students that, um, we haven't mined.
Okay.
So, what, so what was your thoughts?
Um, either, I think, uh, I think her name is, um, I haven't, we haven't talked to her yet, um, but maybe Kelsey Fitzgerald, but we haven't talked to her yet.
Or, so. Okay.
Oh.
So, who would, who would talk to her, Diana?
I can call her tomorrow.
Okay.
Great. So, what, we did the last time with six weeks, and.
I think it was ten hours a week. I don't remember here.
Something.
It's six hundred and, well, no, it was six hundred and eighty-dollar long sum at the end of the summer, ten dollars an hour, so it's sixty-eight hours.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Throughout the summer.
Yeah.
So, um, and where is, where, how do the summer programs stand as it is, as?
Um, I can have Diana come in and talk to you about what she's thinking about for her adult programs, and what will happen for her, the children's program is Lauren will continue to do super sleuths twice a month, um, which is a s, um, a storytime and craft and activity, um, thing that she does twice a month for grades one through five.
And by the time.
Um, and she will also continue to do drop-in craft once a month, and Suzie will make sure that she does all of the electronic stuff to, um, get our website ready so that, um, either the staff or families or kits can go in and log, log their reading throughout the summer. And Suzie's already contacted the Totsfield Fair about the prizes, and, um, she's also going to have the growls, kits, and, um, probably Lauren or maybe Kelsey can run that, that program.
Say that again.
It's a, it's a kit, I don't, can't remember which organization it is, it's a little round box, and you can grow, I don't know, basil and tomato or something like that, and it's, which is a, a summer program, around those, for the kids.
It's a little kit. Who does the website?
We all do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, so my, I'm, I'm in there a lot, Diana's in there, Suzie's in there.
Each of them.
And, um, Megan.
Megan.
The four of us, yeah. So, I can get Diana if you'd like me to?
Um, I don't know, are we ready to, um, or do we wanna talk about, so do we wanna see the summer programs before we finalize interim staffing? Yeah? Give us a better, a better feel for.
She, she leaves soon anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, do you mind if I do that?
No, no, no.
Oh, I can correct.
Oh, you don't want?
Sorry, Natalie.
That's all right.
Forgot what?
Always do that.
Oh, yeah.
It gets really simple and everything.
This, uh, also.
The letters, however.
The only thing is Jen.
Yeah, I'll get Jen's.
She's on way.
Did you find it?
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
There's somebody else that's there.
Oh, yeah, Louise, yeah, Suzie, you're here, yeah.
What's the total, um, hours that Lauren normally works?
She usually works fifteen hours a week.
That's like a position when we went to the summer.
Yeah, so that's like nineteen hours a month. And Gail's like twenty-one or twenty-three.
Twenty-one.
No, fifteen, fifteen hours a week, did she say? Fifteen, that's about sixty.
Second thing I've done today, I've made all the copies that were blank.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, I don't have enough for everybody.
We'll share.
Okay.
We'll share. Did you take one, Cassie?
We'll share.
Yeah, I think, do you think we're gonna get one?
Well, we've got our own little puzzle, yeah.
Okay.
About sharing.
Thank you. All right.
Sharing this one, Natalie.
Okay.
Don't touch any of those copies.
Hello. Hello.
Tell us about, ooh, tell us about the programs.
Okay. Um, well, I included the May programs, uh, even though that's not part of the summer, but, um, the film documentary is, um, actually the last of the May programs, which is free, as it's part of the Creative Equal Grant, um, that we got. So, we're, we're gonna be doing that on May thirty-first. Um, and then June is all Creative Equal grant money.
Well, okay.
So. Yeah, so that.
And how much was the total grant?
Twelve hundred.
Roughly.
And that should, so that's a lot of programming for June.
It's not costing us anything.
Yeah, that's, that's, that is good.
That's the best part. All June.
Oh, yeah.
Was that a repeat in July, or is this a new one from him?
Uh, this one's a new one, yeah. I, I have, um, contacted him. Um, yeah, so that's a new one from Jeremy Deschamont.
I missed him.
And we're gonna have the Boston Saxophone Quartet, which will have that Nichols Village, and we're splitting, splitting across with them, because they, they came, they, yeah, and they came down in price for that. Oh, excellent. Which is. That's good. Amazing. Um, hopefully, we will be able to have Dick Blair, um, in August. He, he did ask for five hundred. I, I had mentioned.
You're bargaining, huh?
Mentioned for three hundred, um, so we'll see.
Did you cry?
I haven't cried yet.
This is the library.
So, we'll see, I, yes, I have, um, asked for a little bit of pity, um, but I, I haven't cried yet. Um.
Small libraries.
Amy Herzog, yes, I, I think knitters would be very happy. Um, we have connected, the last connection was, she may be moving to Connecticut, so, but, um, at that point, the only issue would be that she might not be able to do it on a weeknight, so I think it will still be possible.
What about a Saturday?
Right, yeah, so, like, but if not, your knitters could actually come to a Monday program.
They do.
I, well, no, no, I know some of you, you get to, but some, all of your knitters will be able to go to a knitting program.
Of interest.
That's the way to do it.
All the knitters. Right.
And do scrabble, do the scrabble.
Yeah. Right. Um, and I'm hoping to do, um, I haven't heard back from creature teachers yet, but, um, which, maybe they're away, I'm, I'm hoping.
School vacation, right?
Yeah, they've, it's been a few days, but, um, it's two fifty, um, for, for them to come and then it's another twenty five for travel, so.
Um, a lot of places are sending.
Yeah, so it's twenty five, it's not too bad.
And we're so community.
Yes. Uh, but I think that would be fun, um, and I'm thinking that would be a good end of the program for summer when we do it outside.
Yeah. What, the end of the program is usually like August seventh, around that kind of?
Yeah, right around that.
So we're trying to figure what we need for summer help.
Yeah.
But that's what I thought.
And then I have other programs, but I, I don't think I made copies of that page, cause that's, that's further into the year.
Yeah, we're all doing it.
Now, this summer, twelve hundred dollars.
Yes.
That's just from.
That's July and August.
Oh, this is, okay, so that's July and August.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because June is already taken care of.
June is taken care of, gotcha.
Yeah.
And so you, you have twelve hundred dollars you'll need for July and August.
Excellent.
Looks like the library will be busy.
Yes, yes, I've been working hard on this scheduling, great schedule, particularly in June.
I went to, um, a breakfast, pancake breakfast in, in Georgetown and I sat with a couple who's from Georgetown lifelong members and they said, they always come to library, at Global Library, cause we have great programs.
Excellent.
So I thought I'd let you know. They travel all right over.
A good team.
Okay, that's great.
I, I don't think this is twelve hundred though, is it, these July and August?
I think it is.
Okay.
Unless I did my math wrong. Which is also possible.
It is.
Yeah, well, yeah.
It is. Yeah.
It goes quick.
Yeah, it does.
I got the first call imagined and everybody's like, yeah, it's like, I'm still working on things.
I, I did it a few times, yeah.
Okay. So, do we, um.
Where are we taking this from?
Do we have to?
That's what we're raising money for, the book thick and, uh, for programs, you got, that's what I'm saying.
Books sale and.
So should we not, we, well, we can't, should we just say we're gonna take out donations when we get the money?
That's what we're raising the money for, we have to keep it exactly, and turn what we're raising money for, and for some, as what it's.
How much does the donation account have now?
Treasure.
Uh.
We didn't do the treasure.
This we did.
We didn't do the treasure report, yeah.
We only, well, that's on, but it comes in the end of the year.
It's on the budget.
Natalie's, it's right there.
Right, right.
Eight thousand seven hundred and thirty four dollars.
Some of that is probably already earmarked too though.
Oh, yeah, I hear it is earmarked.
It's earmarked by the, um.
Eighty, eighty.
Yeah.
By the projector.
Cause that came out of the numbers.
But the, the donation.
Just, set out the last of the thank you notes for that, um, Laurie did the most of them and Jen did them.
So if we subtract that thirty eight eighty out of that eight thousand, we really only got five.
So, Daniel, Phil goes.
Well, two, and then there's very possibly other funds earmarked out of the donation account.
But still, that's enough.
Cause I kept a whole list of, as money came in. You think most of that money for the trees and that, that specific bequest that was made for trees and that kinda book.
Trees?
Remember, it was like, oh, that greenery and that kind of.
People.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, you know, that, there's the, you know, the five thousand dollar charity fund, that type thing was completely expended.
Yes. Okay, yeah.
Oh, you did, yeah, as of very, very recently.
Yeah.
Yeah, just recently, I think you wrote on the thing last of it, on one of the invoices.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, cause we have to be careful with that now.
Speaking of which, the invoices are on the table.
Oh.
And Laurie, um, you know, I, I had brought up that we should pass it around, or, at the m- meeting and Denise confirmed for me that that really is something we actually should do and we should say, how many invoices and how ma- how much money every month? Because only five of us, five of us has to sign, so four of us may not know what's going, what went on, so we should just recap it, say it out loud, say how many we.
Yeah.
At these meetings.
At these meetings. So, that felt good. So it's got a lot of.
Okay.
So, if you can, um.
So we should make a, a, a motion to take the summer programs out of the donation account.
Yes, and will Suzie need money?
Not for what I just listed.
Okay, well, I mean, you want to make it, or the interim or, I mean, children's, I mean, may have requests and the money's being raised hopefully.
Right. So they'll have any bucks.
Yeah.
Okay, so may I have a motion to, uh, fund the twelve hundred dollars from the donation account for adult programming?
That's the money that was a grant that came in.
No, that's in addition.
No, this is an additional.
In addition.
In addition to.
Oh.
Yeah, I made the motion to fund the programs and, uh, I think you do a fantastic job with it.
And we're taking this from?
Donations.
Donations.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody in favor?
Give the woman the money.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Well, Steve, yes, drive safely.
Thank you.
And, um.
That's right, I won't leave you.
So, we can put that under directory report, all the invoices, all of these.
You wanna go back and do treasures or?
No, we have to finish staffing.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So I'm gonna give Laurie a minute to sum that, sum those invoices up.
I'll do that.
Okay. So, um, so do we want to, uh, increase the number of hours that the interim director and fund that from state aid? And I don't know how much that is, would just be whatever the amount of money is for an additional ten hours.
I think that.
I think we should because, because we're not gonna get Christine back for the summer and we know that she knew everything in and out, we don't know if this new person is gonna be, you have to do a little training involved in the beginning.
Right.
So I think it would be helpful to have some, the interim.
Yeah, I agree.
Not that this new person wouldn't be able to do it, but there's gonna be a learning curve.
Right, and we're gonna have to cut the staff hours back or we're gonna go away.
No, I have a question, I'll be also looking for him to, interim children's library.
That's a good question and that should be discussed too, so, um, you know, like, like Natalie said, we have, um, Bibliotems also provides interim, um, uh, staffing for any position.
Cause that's kind of.
Um, and we also can, um, we don't, we cannot add any more positions, so like, we can't add a page, we can't add any of those kinds of things. Um, we also could, um, just post the position and then have the interim director hire the, um, children's librarian is another option.
I think that would be a great idea.
I don't know, I kinda like the idea of doing an interim on the children's.
Okay.
But the kids get so attached to them.
They do.
That's the thing, you know.
When Ms. Gina left, there were a lot of broken hearts.
Yeah.
Well, there are a lot of broken hearts right now.
Well.
High school, they fell apart less probably than. And both of the same thing when, when Suzie leaves, yeah.
Yeah, but I believe in, in term of.
It would be nice for a new director to hire her own staff, I agree with that.
Right.
Right, with a new director, but we're having interim director, we don't know how long that's going to be, so.
But what about the interim director?
We, what's, am I, um, confused, but I thought the interim director through this Bibliotemp could not then be hired by us as a librarian, am I correct?
I. No, she can.
We were looking at.
She can, oh.
Has to be a certain amount of time that she's here with us, is that correct?
And, um, and there's also, uh, a lot, one of the Donnie's questions and our questions was, how much is it gonna cost, there is, I think because it's M, uh, Mass Library Board, there is no cost. So there's no hidden fees in there, so, um.
Oh, that's nice, that's nice.
You mean if.
If we hi- if, if, if it goes to.
She likes us and we like her and she wants, you know.
They, they have to be, they're mutually acceptable, I, I think they have to stay with us for a hundred and twenty days and then we can hire them.
And we decide then it's just, of course, the board, okay. Okay.
Under Bibliotemp.
So their, their contract is a hundred and twenty days minimum, is their, their contract, in other words.
Yes. Yes. Right. Or, right.
And I mean, meanwhile, we'd wanted children's librarian, my feeling is you'd need a children's librarian in the summer unless you can find someone, you know, like, that can take over.
Right.
She's not getting up being home with that baby.
No, well, she's out all the time, I see some, I know somebody who sees her all over the place, I like it. I mean, that would be wonderful if we could have, even if it was just temporary, you know, if we could say, hey, it just been summer and while we hopefully find somebody and then, you know.
Somebody's alarm is going off.
Somebody's car is going off.
No car, it's my phone. Um, so, is it?
I would not like to see an interim hire.
Interim, hire.
An interim director.
Hire a permanent.
A permanent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they're gonna be with us long enough. Unless. Unless we decide that we love this person and it works out.
Yeah.
But we don't know that, we don't. But we got, but we got a time period that we're talking about.
And the, the other thing about, you know, I don't, about hiring interims, they can come from anywhere, I mean, the chances of them being local might not be realistic. And, you know, for an interim position, you would, you might travel, um, more than you would for, uh, regular positions, so.
Right.
I think it's idealistic to think that we would ha- uh, hire permanent, the, the te- the interim.
And I don't think that should even be our goal, I think we need to post the jar.
No, no, I'm just.
No, but it's a possibility, then, if it's, if it's.
Because I, my, my reason would be, I really feel whoever's going to end up being the librarian should have.
A hire.
A hiring of the person.
Right. Their own staff.
Her staff. So if we're doing an interim, do we do an interim children's also?
Well, we, we would have to look at that right now, I think that that's probably our only option at this stage.
And if one works out, one.
Probably, yeah, that's true.
I mean.
I think we do an interim at this time.
Do you know enough about this kind of thing, Natalie, but?
I mean, I know, I, I can only say that if I were an interim director. You know, I would feel, you know, not sure that, you know, that it'd be staying, it would be, feel a little funny to, to hire another's, uh, permanent staff member.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. You'd agree, yeah, unless you knew that, you know, the possibility was they like, you know, a good lady like you, you like them, or, you know, you had that conversation kind of, once this one hundred and twenty days is over, we, you know. Yeah, but in terms of a children's librarian, our timeframe is not. Is not a hundred and twenty days. Feasible for us, well, it's also not feasible for us to really do a good job at it, and so, if Bibliotems will do an interim to get us just to have a position going in there.
Right, and the other, you know, the other question would be, um, is having two interims a good plan?
We don't have a choice at this stage.
Well, I think that's the plan.
I mean, we've got, you know, Diana around them, we've got Megan, we've got Lauren, we've got Gail still for a while around them that.
Right.
That can help, I don't think you really have another choice at this stage.
Which is another good point, bringing up Gail retiring in July and that, um, that will be another position. Um, in which case, you know, I, I don't think we'll be hiring by July, uh, you know, a new director, so, um, it'll be another gap of twenty one hours.
And I don't think they're gonna let us ha- hire for twenty one hours, I think they're gonna make us from nineteen hours.
Yeah, cause when Gail got bumped up over that, there was a big ruckus.
Yeah, there was.
Huge ruckus. Was kinda one under, behind the door and they did it.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I think right now we worry about, we need to get our Bibliotems to get us our interim director, we also need to talk to them, and we all agree that we need to do the ten more hours out of state aid.
With ten more hours.
Yeah.
Okay, may I have a motion to, uh, increase the amount of time, the ten, uh, of the interim director for ten hours to be funded out of state aid?
Mm-hmm.
I have the motion.
Well, can I, can I just say one thing?
No.
To be funded out of state aid after we go through our money, because once we have seventy thirty seven hours, these hours for staff will be back to the irregular, the irregular schedule, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Oh, so.
See what I mean?
So after we've finished.
So that money that we would be paying extra for the staff.
Well, what can happen, yeah, cause this is an increase in hours.
It's in salary.
So it's a good, uh, caveat, after the bud- after the funding and salary line is depleted.
Right.
And throw it only for two months, May and June.
Right.
Right.
And then July, you get the new funding, so it'll be fine.
Right.
Right, and we know.
Well, we won't be fine, it'll still have to be coming out.
Summer, but that would be after we expand what we have.
Because.
Right.
For the next, until June thirty, and then, I think you already said that money can be moved in that salary, but not, not from any other part of the budget.
Within, within salaries.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. So.
Some, and we still do, we still.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm agreeing with Tom.
So were you making the first?
I'm making the motion that we up the interim directors' hours by twenty, up to thirty five.
Thirty five, thirty seven.
Take the.
Thirty seven, thirty seven.
Thirty seven, so the extra twelve hours a month then.
Thirty five to thirty seven.
Twenty five to.
Thirty five to thirty.
Twenty seven, so an additional ten hours is thirty five to thirty seven.
I thought you said it was twenty five.
Twenty five to twenty seven.
Twenty five to twenty seven.
Oh, it's a spread on twenty five to twenty seven.
So thirty five to thirty seven.
And Denise has been a lot of this, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, Denise has got things, this is.
Yeah, yeah, well, that was her suggestion, she said, you know, i- if, if you can fund it from state aid, you can ask for more and it's, you know, we looked at and made sure everything was doable to switch.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah. Mm-hmm. She's excellent, isn't she?
Very good.
Okay, do you have a motion? Motion back on our motion, yeah.
You making the.
About too complicated for me.
I make a motion to add ten hours of state aid, once we go through the money from the payroll account for the interim director.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I have a motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed?
Aye.
Anybody abstaining? Now, I think we should make a motion for an interim, um, children's librarian to be, uh, also contracted through Bibliotems so that we can perhaps get a discount or some sort of deal, you know?
Now, the thing of it is, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask, somebody's already asked this and I'm gonna ask, okay, what are the, the number of hours that Suzie works?
Thirty seven.
Thirty seven, okay, so maybe if we're gonna hire summer help, we can go back, cut back on those hours for an interim.
Thirty seven.
Because we're gonna be hiring any summer help that's coming out.
But we always have.
But did you cut back on hours in the summer when you had a help?
Yeah.
No, they always.
Neither did me.
No, so, so we shouldn't.
No, like when they're hired, no, it's not, you need, you visit in the summer.
No, no.
And then.
Well, yeah, I, I'm having as many programs as summer.
And then. And Nat.
I wouldn't, I don't know if I'd cut back.
No, I'm okay.
And Natalie also mentioned that there, previously that there wasn't, um, any vacation that people were planning, uh, so that, so far that, you know.
Nobody's taking summer vacation.
So that always, you know, if somebody was taking two weeks, we would need to pay attention to that.
Uh, yeah, that's the, and, and now it's started, the town hall is not gonna be carryover for a lot of vacation time, so that's probably gonna eventually filter down to us.
If they're doing thirty seven, but they're coming as contracted, then we're not doing benefits.
We're not gonna be, and we're not gonna be able to have thirty seven hours because we won't be able to afford, so that money that pays thirty seven hours has to not only pay for the hours that we're hiring.
The fee.
But the forty percent.
Other fees, yeah.
Right.
Fee, so it won't.
To Bibliotemp.
To Bibliotemp, so it won't be thirty seven hours, so as much as we can for the budget that we have, um.
Yeah.
Twenty five.
And that will have to go through Denise too, and they should.
Which will be about twenty five.
I'm just saying, can we make that motion that it's based on what Denise?
Based on the finance department.
So as many hours as we can for the budget line.
Yeah.
For Suzie, for, uh.
Does the interim director have to be paid the same amount that Suzie was for our?
Intimate li- um, children's?
Hmm.
No.
No.
I don't know what Suzie's paid, but.
Like they'll have a rate though, won't they?
Bibliotemp have a, a basis for it.
Uh, so.
Yeah, they have that rate sheet, you show.
Yeah.
They have a rate, yeah, but I don't know for children's, I mean. We weren't looking at children's at that point.
No.
Let's see what I have.
You know, like, is it the same as, you know, the head, head librarians a little bit, I would think would be.
Well, it wasn't even priced.
No.
Oh, what, head what?
The head librarian.
No. Versus other, you know, positions.
Right.
Well.
Well, you can work it out with Denise.
Yeah, if, if Denise, Denise would be the one, she.
Yeah.
And I think we should vote that if this all works out with Denise and the money and it all works out, she gets that the authority to ask the Bibliotems to get going on this, because it's not that far along.
Right.
My child's already been sent.
If we can do.
It hasn't been.
Put a lot of separate contracts for it.
Right, exactly.
Right. You know, um, we can't wait till our next meeting, cause that's, Suzie will be gone for a couple of weeks by then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, story hour and the rest, I don't, I need to keep going.
Well, I, I think from, when I talk to Suzie, I don't think she's do, I think she has canceled both story hours for May and June, temp- just the finals, no, because.
Wow.
Well, it's May seventh, is it her last day?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be crazy.
I know, but.
Well, you could always put them back, but, but it's better to know than, and to inform.
Yeah, oh, exactly. Yeah, right, right.
Yeah. Because, uh, I'm just, yeah.
So, do I have a motion made to, um. To move forward with the Bibliotemp contract to hire an interim children's librarian, uh, for as many hours as possible, um, based on the.
Perfect, with the, the finals.
Yeah.
With, with the discussion with the finance director.
I have the motion.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Please answer that.
Oh, a second.
By second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying?
Okay.
All right, yay.
While we're talking about staffing and the step, is, um, is there going to be an exit interview on this through either the selectmen or through the trustees?
Well, it's not a standard operating procedure at town.
Or they don't do that?
As I just, as I was going through the library trustees handbook, that's something they highly suggest.
Are we do, do we do one?
We. Yeah, it's not been something we have done.
We don't. Something we should do.
Well, I, I mean, that, I'm kind of feeling perhaps it should be done where we're having to leave within a month or two.
Well, we didn't, we didn't hire her. And that's, this board of selectmen is a hire and we only do the suggesting, so if anybody was gonna do it, we would do the board of selections.
Yeah.
Which is why they made us go to the board of selectmen to do the, the second application.
To do that.
Yeah, you can't, you can only suggest, you can't hire them, we don't have the authority to hire, we don't override town government.
That's true.
Hmm.
Um, so. We can send a letter.
I mean, I just
Mm-hmm.
Feel it would be a good thing, um.
You mean that, if we're talking about for the director?
I don't, I just know that we don't hire, so we don't do that.
Well.
We only recommend.
And. Right. I don't, I don't know, it could be, it would be the selectmen, I guess, then, because, yeah, they're doing the honey ring.
So we can send a letter to the selectmen suggesting.
Yeah, because I mean, especially where we've had, we had two, um. Okay, well, what's the?
But it may be here.
New one.
Um.
So are we ready for the treasures people?
I'm ready.
Um.
We made no money.
What?
Made no money.
Great. Well, we actually, and, and I think this is suitable, um, we've had, we've, for the first year, gone for sponsorships for the book sale.
Mm-hmm.
And we had an excellent response from business owners. And, um, because we've called a lot of them, and so I deposited five hundred dollars, you know, I didn't want to hold on to the checks.
In the where?
In the donation account, because this is book sale, so I'll give you that to hold on to.
Okay.
Book sale, right. Now, what are they getting for their sponsorship?
They're getting their name on.
Okay, I'm just asking.
I don't do social media, but they're getting their name and.
Yeah, I'm working on sheets, plus, yeah, a little sheet stuff.
She's working on that. And Lisa's posting it all some, someplace on social media.
And it went through constant contacts, all the.
It's been on Facebook, and a lot of these, yes.
And I'll take, and I will, um, I'll make sure I send, um.
It has.
Well, now, now.
And then have thank you letters after.
Thank you letters.
I still have a hundred dollar check, I didn't, um, it came today after I did the deposit, and there's a couple hundred dollars more promising business, what's it called, but I talked a little there on.
And we get a lot of businesses that gave donations for a silent auction as well.
And.
Yeah, we got a lot of nice stuff for that.
And, um, Lisa and I worked on it, said last night, it's a quarter past eleven, but we've got a ton of book donations, she's out there tonight. If I have any skin left on the heart of it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, no money, treasure homework.
Not money, I mean, you can see it, we made forty-one cents in the citizens account.
Wow.
We did get money.
Fantastic.
Can't buy a cup of coffee with that, it's terrible, that account is terrible, um.
Can't pay for a phone call with that anymore, so, what about the dance back? We don't have that yet, there's a lot.
We don't have it yet, we don't have it yet, um, that's been doing well though, I mean, everything is doing well.
Oh, yeah. Well, they're balanced so well.
Yeah, it's all just, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, all the, he's an I, um.
Just in Portland.
Developing.
Oh, the emerging markets.
Yeah, the emerging markets.
Emerging markets, yeah, but even they've been starting to do well.
Yeah, and, um.
They're coming back, they're competitive, but they're coming back, um, and we used to do for savings, we, we make a little more there.
A little bit.
But, you know, and more than forty-one cents could be quite a bit of money now.
That's true. That's true.
And soon as we get, soon as I take the money out to, um, buy the bookcases, pay for that, I mean, I, I may even have to take money from
Yeah.
the Institute for Savings Savings Account and moving back to citizens.
Yeah. Okay.
So that I can write checks, because we keep hitting the same few accounts in the citizens that will let us do anything.
Yeah, well. We're allowed, yeah.
Do you want us to sign it?
If you'd like to sign it, it did that you saw forty-one cents?
That we saw forty-one cents.
Do you know what that, that sale of a library building from, that's for anything? That's from one of, so.
So we could, yeah, well, we do, and we hit that one almost every time, when it's stuffed, it's not books.
We can. We have to. Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Because there's only, but there's only a couple that we can do anything we want.
I know.
Please, if you ever give money to the library, don't put restrictions on it. It needs a very hard place to spend it.
Is that all the treasures you put on?
That's all I have to say.
All right.
Sorry.
And old business, uh, report on action items. So.
Oh.
One of these, I have the action items.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Open meeting.
I know, I know.
Open meeting, dark one.
So. Laurie.
Yeah.
You scanned the survey.
I scanned.
Yeah.
And, um.
I could keep getting these on the pages.
I scanned everything, I scanned the open reading document, everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll read them.
Yep.
Well, that was, yeah, we were all supposed to say, we have the, yeah.
I did.
I did.
I did.
Tonight. Yes.
Yes, yes.
You didn't just.
Uh, I did. Did you read the open reading?
Yes, excellent. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Talking about.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Bye-bye.
I'm sorry.
Did you read the?
Oh, yes, I have them with me, and I even highlighted things and put stickies on them so that I could whip it out if I have to.
Okay. Excellent. I appreciate that.
I even read the whole Mass Library handbook again, the newer one, I don't think we have the.
Have they found out with another new one?
Two thousand twelve, two thousand twelve is the newest that's online, but it doesn't, and they don't even have the, um, technology chapter in there.
The combined.
It's a two big continuum.
Yeah.
If this is two thousand twelve, then.
That's a bad idea. Maybe two thousand fourteen as well.
So, um.
Natalie, Cory.
Uh, the Corys.
Cory.
So.
Explain to me, explain to me.
Yeah, well, we are being Coryed. We do not work here, we do not volunteer here, we don't interact.
Okay. We don't, okay, we don't have to be Coryed.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, we're not Coryed, being Coryed, yeah.
I saw that one, it's just, that's just spending money.
Well, we were, we were being enthusiastic and saying, everybody should be Coryed, so, um.
For the class money?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um.
Okay, we can move on.
But Denise said, you guys have started going over, Natalie?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And, um, you get, and she asked for a list of, um,
Yeah, and I gave that to her.
li- uh, volunteers, and the volunteers will be, um, sent over as they cycle through their volunteer status.
Perfect.
That's for only anybody sent here, you know, on the kids, on the team, you don't have to.
Yes.
Um. So is there anybody that still needs to be done, uh, staff-wise?
Uh, I think, Meg- Megan, did you go over tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think the only other person is Lauren, and she's in Washington DC right now.
Excellent, thank you.
Any questions?
Um, and related to the Cory is, the, we, we were talking about Cory policy, which we don't have to have because the town has the Cory policy.
They have.
And then we, um, we go under that.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, we're not doing, trustees aren't Cory, being Cory, um, unless you're volunteering, and then you should be Cory.
I've been Coryed every year. Twice this year.
If you're playing with the kids, um, or the elderly, I guess that's another thing that it's, too. Okay, Survey Monkey, Natalie?
I talked to the, um, as it would be, the interim director at the Mass, the Mass, Merrimack Library Consortium, and, um, it would actually, for us to use it, it would actually, um, involve us having access to their credit card number. And she wasn't comfortable with that, and they're actually, as we are, as our staff is in a transition period right now, so is theirs, there's an interim director, and they also have another full-time person who handles the Survey Monkey, who just moved out to Alaska, and they didn't feel comfortable with allowing us to have access to their credit card information, and I think that makes sense, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Either, you know, we decide to do, go forward with the limited amount of questions that a free Survey Monkey account will allow, or look into, you know, subscribing to a page.
Do you think there was a dom- nominal amount, wasn't it like thirty bucks?
I think Jen.
Jen had another, had other ideas too, but she's not here.
Yeah. And didn't we use Survey Monkey when we did the survey?
But we only do twenty-five questions.
We did.
And would be more than that now?
I think, or was it ten questions?
No, it was ten.
And ten is free, yeah.
Ten, ten, okay.
Yeah.
But Jen had other ideas, but she's not here tonight, so.
Okay.
Carry on.
So we'll carry that to May.
You should send that to me.
Thanks for checking that out, Natalie, and, uh, I, speaking of credit cards, I did ask the finance director also, and we're not allowed to have credit cards, so.
No, we're not. No, we must give every finance director that.
But I asked again. I know, I, boy, I asked again anyway, um, because that makes life easier.
To, yeah.
They haven't run into problems before, and it's just the policy of the town, not to.
Yeah. So Lori has, John, um.
He has had hip surgery, so I gotta be on commission for a little bit.
Oh. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll keep it on my follow-up list.
And, um.
And I did not, I am, I am behind, I did not do the, um, the snowfall, the clarification, I need to do that.
Okay.
And I've been so tied up with the book sale and the, the, um, silent auction, that I have not done anything on the bylaws at this point, I need to.
Okay, so.
Taille the bylaws.
See if we can tail the bylaws.
Tail all the bylaws.
Make a motion to tail the bylaws.
But, but what, there's, there's nothing to do for the bylaws, right, because.
We have to re-write.
We were rewriting.
We were rewriting them.
We were gonna rewrite, there's some things in there that are obsolete, you can do.
Yeah, but how are we rewriting them if we haven't decided what we're rewriting them with?
We were all supposed to be looking at them in.
Right, and then discuss them before we can rewrite them, so I don't know how you can.
Do you think so, right?
She was going to do the, she was going to put them.
That's right.
I was gonna start the first draft for different information that everybody had given.
We gave her a bunch of ideas.
Where we gave her ideas.
We had to.
That, how they did, way with that.
General session, we're all talking.
Yeah, but I don't think we, I, as I recall, I don't think we, much of anything came out of that meeting, other than we should look at the bylaws and read the ones that are currently there, and then start coming up with ideas for the next meeting, which was supposed to be this meeting.
Right. Right.
And there were also some that were done by.
No, you're talking everything.
Who was doing?
You're talking about.
Yeah, thinking about policies.
Of policies, I mean.
Yeah, we were talking, just.
The policy, yeah.
But I thought it was that we were taking the ones from other areas and trying to see what was appropriate, and I was telling.
Yeah.
We were gonna read, everybody was gonna read that.
And I was gonna give everybody a markup of what kind of things we saw from other
Yeah.
policies, so that then everybody could look at it, so we weren't trying to rewrite, we were trying to reinvent the wheel, we were trying to at least take what we had and trying to update it and referencing where we were updating it from.
To help us.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and.
And making sure we weren't, I'm sorry, but, but making sure we weren't duplicating the town.
Town policy.
Bylaws, because nothing we do trumps the town, town policies come first, the town bylaws come first.
So, so we were trying to have, um, Lori was trying to put together a, a draft for us to look at, as opposed to just.
But she's.
A colorful draft.
Colorful.
So that you'd know what was like, they are already.
So if it was green, it was from someplace.
Yeah.
That's right.
And if it was black, it's our own.
That's right.
I, I did look at Josh, I had some very good ideas.
So is it whether they're green?
It's, I've been straight out on the book sale and finishing up the annual appeal, and the book sale is taking, getting in touch with businesses, and that's been taken up.
Okay.
Well, would it be easier to have like a subcommittee?
Well, that was a good question, but the only person who volunteered was Lori.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess I missed that.
And I said I'd work with her on it, but as I say, this is a, no, no.
Um.
And I can.
I said I would after July.
After July. There's just been, there's just been so much going on, trying to get the book sale going, and I was, that I was just.
Yeah. I mean, that's our biggest fundraiser, to fund all these programs, we have to have the money to do it, it's not coming out of the town, but it's, it's just, it's just not there, so.
Uh, volunteer.
So.
Huh?
Great, okay.
I'll volunteer.
Yeah.
Awesome.
So that's three of us, we gotta come in.
Here's I can do a lot.
Thank you, thank you for volunteering, so, um.
Too long.
Lauren's on the po- Lauren's on the policy.
I don't know whether Amesbury, but Amesbury's a city, so, I don't know whether Merrimack, uh, has a, um, their policies or their bylaws online.
Yeah.
But Georgetown did, so they were, they were.
Yeah, they have excellent ones, very clear about department heads and that, yeah.
Okay, so maybe you guys can get together and we'll table it to May.
Well, you can also go too far.
Yeah, you can go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're tabling it till May?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you for.
We can watch on the table till May.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, now we're on to Natalie, review liability coverage with regard to Nickel Village.
Yes, I spoke with the staff there this week, and a certificate, a copy of their liability insurance certificate will be forthcoming, should be in the next couple of days.
That's cool.
Now, were they required to make you an additional name insured?
She said something about, I did it on bra, I, I don't know insurance, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
So unfortunately, I know insurance, because I do it for work, and so usually you ask to be an additional named insured on policies when you're doing things, so.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, so. Can I look through questions?
We can look at it and see, you know.
Yeah. Okay.
So will that be housed for us, or does it have to go to town hall?
Town hall usually requires a ride.
Probably we'll get a coffee and they'll get the co- they'll get a coffee.
Yeah.
So you'll check on whether we need to be an initial, no, an additional name?
Additional name insured.
Yeah.
Additional.
Good thing you're not the secretary.
Oh, I wouldn't tell you it was pretty when I was. Um, um, excellent, thank you Natalie, and, um, Carlos?
Oh.
Meeting room.
So I learned we can get the projector for a lot less money, houses, plus dollars less.
Yay.
Oh, less, that's, that's. So we might not have to go into state aid, or we might, we need this.
Yeah, so.
We're at three days.
So, so anyway.
All right.
The, the, the piece, no, is because we don't have credit cards, everybody, I talked to a lot of places where I could get them, they were like, yeah, we.
Yeah.
I, I'll gladly use my credit card.
So.
You can use, use his.
Well, I, I found, I, I found an organization that will provide us a quote, so that we can use, go with, with a PO, so they're sending me the PO hopefully shortly, and then the people that were trying to charge us a whole ton of money
Okay. Yeah.
said that they would, they would do the installation if we already have the parts, so they're gonna tell me what it's gonna be for cost for.
Nice. Install.
Install plus all the equipment that may be needed for the install.
And the new, the new people wouldn't be able to do, I suppose, if they're paying a price, they wouldn't want to do this.
Now, they're. Yeah, all they do is sell, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll sell it to us, but.
Yeah, do with it what you want.
It doesn't have, you know, like a warranty period or whatever.
Yeah, it's a three-year warranty on equipment and all that stuff.
Excellent. And then, when they're installing it, they'll see what's above.
Yeah, I told them it's a drop ceiling and, and there, there's methods of installing based on the ceiling and all that stuff.
Right. Okay. Good, because that's important, we don't have it right over his head, and it's gonna be installed right about.
Right about.
The clock.
Yeah.
Facing the clock.
Yeah.
So it'll be right about here.
Oh, so I have the middle.
And then, and then will they install the screen too?
Yeah, they'll, they'll do the.
Excellent.
And the screens.
Nice.
Yeah, the screen will go over there.
Yeah, and then we'll have the blackout shades as well.
And then when, and. And when the, um, shelves are movable, we can just move it out, and then we'll have the whole length that they're on.
Right. We'll have all that.
Right.
That'll be wonderful.
Yeah.
Without cords in, on the ground.
Right.
Yeah, just.
And that's what these, that's what they'll run, the cord will be run to a location somewhere where the people can connect the.
In the closet, probably.
We'll, we'll have a couple on the outside, just so that when the presenter can, with the cord can connect and present, and then we're gonna take the DVD player
Yeah, that'd be great.
and stick it in the closet and connect it up, so that way it's there, so when you need to use it, it's just turn on, plug in and.
So of course we'll go. Well, the electrician will.
We'll run the power so that we can plug it right there, but then the other vendor will actually be doing all the running about the video cable
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
that you need and.
Will they have to communicate the electrician and stuff?
Not typically, typically it's just where is the power, okay, as long as it's close enough to where the projector will sit.
Okay. Right. Well, it only knows what you're gonna find up there.
Well, there's an outlet though, maybe.
And, um, you were thinking, like, now that the room is going in this direction, that the presenter, so over here, versus
Right.
where we normally have them is over there, so this is much better for the directional.
Right.
Right. That's gonna be wonderful, that's gonna open up a whole, plus we're not losing books, shelf space right now, like, that's the new.
Right.
Yeah, well, the new ones.
Shelf that.
It's actually gonna get more, I think she's.
And we have a lot of chairs, or do we need, well, I keep thinking, well, yes, this is.
One thing at a time, let's run out of chair, let's run out of chairs first.
So, I'm looking at last month.
We won't come to you in minutes.
And you were authorized for like up to forty-five hundred dollars, so you think it might be thirty-five hundred dollars?
It might, it, well, it might be less than the forty-five, because we were looking to cut corners based on, we only have this, because the quote we first got was like six thousand dollars.
Eight hundred, eighty dollars plus forty dollars.
The initial was six, so we brought it down to forty-five.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. But they wanted seven hundred dollars in shipping.
So. Right, so, so we're, we're looking to, to, I'm still looking to save money as much as I can.
Yeah.
And try to do as much as we can to keep the num- number under thirty-eight.
Excellent.
But.
Excellent, goes a little bit over, goes a little bit over, we might have done right.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, you're getting up to forty-five, yeah.
And did we thank you for donating the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
General.
Excellent.
And the books are, cases are ordered, I heard you say, nice, thank you.
Oh, hi, was it Natalie?
I'm sorry?
I wanted to say that the Georgetown Library
Yeah.
is ha- setting up so that they can, uh, televise live.
Oh.
And it's all being paid for by the cable committee.
The cable committee.
Something to pursue, Carlos, do you think you could take that on? Something to pursue, Carlos, do you think you could do that on?
Yeah, Carlos.
Greg LeBrack is on.
Same idea, you just have, run a cable over here and the Cable Committee will put the whole thing in free for free.
Yeah.
So Carlos will.
And we go.
Do that.
Computers for us a few years ago.
And, yeah, so Greg LeBrack is on the Cable Committee and in Grove.
Yeah.
Joe.
And Joe Demora.
Joe Demora, and uh.
Who else is, Tracy Giltham?
Tracy.
Nice, thank you.
There's something more to.
So since we're, we're wiring, we might as well think about that.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Um, nice. Okay, where are we, um, so report on action items, great, we did the quarry update, great, um, policies, we're up to policies, Barbara.
Okay. My plan is to every month bring you a policy.
Excellent.
And send you home with it, homework, write in the margins, do whatever you want, and then the following month, we can, and I can, and I'll bring you a new one, and we'll just do it that way. Unless they're really short, then I'll bring it two in a month.
How about the ones that Kim already did?
Well, we're starting with some of those because those are really in good shape.
They're excellent, she did have those drawn on.
Um, this first one is on behavior.
Nice.
It's a two pager, the first page is literally verbatim from what we already have, but the second page adds a little more meat to it, okay?
So this is your suggestion?
Yes, and just um.
And so in the, next to our policy book is the pol, town hall policy?
You have one?
No, this is just library policy.
No, but our, our, our policy book is next to a town policy book.
She doesn't have one?
Beth is talking, you're not passing.
I'm passing.
Well, wait, let's, because I.
Now, can we get all paperwork?
Wait, can I make the. Yes, you can, you have to.
Okay.
Does everybody have?
But I only have enough for. I will make copy. Okay.
Who's, who just knocked out?
I don't.
I haven't, no, you didn't.
Oh, so, okay.
I need one.
Oh, I, yeah, but this is, this is very precious, yes, for it to.
I can make a copy of mine today.
Okay, here's one. Okay, so this is.
Oh, I think, yeah, we all worked on this.
But the second page, as I said, has got the, the new stuff.
Right.
A little more meat to it, and this is something that Kim had worked on, I think Kim and Helen.
So.
Yes.
Helen, yeah.
Yeah, and the, the dates, so.
Yes, and we need to make sure that the dates, cause this says number eighth, two thousand twelve, I think we need to update it like this.
Well, that's what this is saying, this is revised and adopted, you know, and I will change that, exactly.
Right.
Any minute do I have?
No, I, I mean, that's something to.
In fact, you'll notice down here where this is three twenty, that's when I copied it to bring you to the live meeting, but then that's it.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we need to look at, um.
So, don't spend your time now, this is for next week, so you don't.
No.
This is our homework, this is your homework.
Next month.
Or else we'll be here for hours.
Right, I think we really should.
Right. I really appreciate that um, effort, uh.
It's a good idea, actually.
You know, we just keep it forward that way, it's very good.
I think. Wonderful idea.
Um, who's, Beth.
I've got one.
So what else, what else do we um?
That's for Jen.
That's for Jen.
I have Jen's already, that's a.
You have one yourself?
I do.
And this is where we covered bringing dogs and other than eight dogs, um, I think we should also look at needing policies for, um,
And then.
We cut as volunteers as well.
No, I don't, I'll take them.
As um, as staff and.
Yeah, I'll, I'm just, I'm starting just to go through them.
Right.
And the ones that have already started are easy ones, so we can zip out four or five of them right away and then um.
I was just gonna suggest, I mean, this, the ones that look really free, we could do more than one at the homework in a month.
Well. Okay, yeah.
Why do you wanna over?
Speak for yourself, yeah, speak for yourself.
I can now.
After July, you can do it in more than one.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, no, I could, I, I mean, you know.
But Kim did a wonderful job.
Okay, so.
No, I think she worked.
So that's patron.
So next month I will be on again with a new one, and I want feedback on that one, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great.
Don't forget, we're also, we're also working on, you know, bylaws and stuff, I mean, this isn't the only thing we're doing between meetings.
Oh, I know, but these, but these in particular.
And I know that, but to keep it, I read a lot.
These in particular were just done in two thousand twelve.
Right.
That's fine, that's fine, but we're gonna update the whole thing.
Yeah.
So there shouldn't be a lot, right, so that's what I'm saying, the easy ones that we've already adopted just two years ago, unless it's really, whoa, things are changed.
Yeah.
Well, or the, or the other question is, should you start from the ones that weren't done in two thousand and twelve, start from the worst?
Well, I was hoping it was that I thought were the most important, and like this one I think is very important.
That's right.
Exactly. Exactly, it is.
Yes.
You know, patron behavior to give the staff some, some teeth to say, I did, and you get some little bratty kids.
Um.
Or adult.
A bully towards adults, or.
But do we also, do we also review with staff for input?
This one, well, actually we could, give this to Natalie, but she's gonna be here next month.
Yeah.
Well, we can, we can.
Does it make someone to represent them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, we could give it to Diana and ask her to review.
Diana, or we, yeah.
Megan's right here.
That's true.
So, that's.
That's true.
I don't know if you'd be willing to.
Um, I don't think we're trying.
Well, you, how, well, you'd do the best way to do that.
Helen?
So.
Wait till the interim comes in or?
Natalie, can you talk and.
Can you give us a suggestion on how?
To the staff and ask for a volunteer?
Yeah, I can, I can ask Diana to address it with the remaining staff.
Okay, why don't you slide this on over, over to her, and I have a computer I can project.
Some of us have all day tomorrow, winter tomorrow night, so.
Okay.
Oh, you wanna do the building walk?
What?
You want building walk, so that's on.
Yes, um, so we tabled bylaws, nine, ten, where's ten, uh, new business, uh, so we did staffing.
Did some programs.
Excellent, we did, I don't know what this, oh, building walkthrough, several pro debt, programs are done, and other and endurancement, so we are, um, so I thought, you know, we had talked about um, walking through the building periodically, um, and making sure that, you know, we know what's going on, Natalie's been able to tell us what's going on, and um, then check how everything's standing. So I thought it would be a perfect time to do it for our first time, um, uh, on the advent of leaving, so we know where we are and moving forward. And if there's any issues, and then the status of computers, cause I know we signed an invoice for um, up, upgrading, uh, adding uh, memory, just last, recently.
Mm-hmm, on a laptop.
So I was thinking, you know, getting a status on computers, is there anything that's gonna need to be purchased, I know we talked about purchasing a laptop, did, did we purchase that laptop, or did we just?
Yeah, Carlos actually, um, helped us purchase the memory and he installed it.
So we just upped the memory, so the laptop is, good.
So it's in the same. Yeah. Yeah, we're working with somebody, a tech person from MVLC, um, who's gonna update the memory, uh, increase memory on the patron computers and install Windows seven.
What do we have, Windows what?
New version that is a deep freeze or, yeah, I'm sorry?
What do we have, Windows what?
XP.
It's XP, which is extinct now.
Ex, well.
I know.
It's just not being supported, yeah.
Just support.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's working with MVLC, and um, so who's gonna be the contact person going forward on that?
Mm-hmm. I can let Diana know about it.
And um.
Carlos, do you kinda know what's going on with the whole computers and that kinda stuff here, would that be something that you?
Yeah, I can help with that, hmm.
Perfect, good backup, good backup.
Okay.
And are we signing those vouchers?
Oh.
Person, um.
Well, these were already signed, weren't they?
Right.
Oh, they were?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Those are.
So the ones that are already signed.
I could see one, I'm sorry.
Well, this is a new ones.
No, no, they're the ones, so reviewing the ones that were signed in the, in the, in the month since the last meeting, sometimes there's two, sometimes there's one.
I thought they were. I signed. Okay.
Yeah, every other week.
Yeah.
So it should be two.
So what are we supposed to be counting now?
So we're supposed to say how many?
Just, just the totals on the first page.
How many invoices, so like seventeen invoices for the total of five thousand six hundred dollars?
On the cover sheet, just have.
This is.
Yeah.
These are, this is the library copy, so there's no.
There's no signatures on it, yeah.
That's why I thought we.
That's what's confusing, yeah, we did.
The signature wants to go to.
Sure, of course.
I signed, he just wanna take the, this week.
The account.
The total, how many there are.
And then how many invoices made up that total?
And what am I doing with that?
Porting it out, and so that we all know.
Count, just, just writing it down.
Alright, this one is one thousand five hundred ninety six thirty five.
Document, you know, documenting it.
Or you can count how many. Yeah.
Twenty invoices, it says right on the cover sheet, thank you.
What's the, the number on the top, the number on the top is the number of invoices?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's just for that one mine item.
Oh, tw, oh, so that's twenty invoices from Ingram and.
Yes.
Don't you think they could kinda?
They, that's.
They can't, they can't, that's the problem.
I know, we've talked about before.
They'll take one check for all of them though.
Thank God.
Yeah.
Of course. I've sent them checks for that.
Yeah.
No, send them twenty.
I mean, if an invoice of three dollars and what's that?
My brother, my brother sends back the um, the, the computers, or they, every bill sends you all that extra stuff, he sends it right back to them with the check, find the check in there.
I would.
So this is.
That's a good idea.
All that.
Well, now it's on.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, um, so we get to walk around the building.
Oh, do that now?
Yeah, that's where we are. Um, or why, is there anything under other, and wow, now they put the brace on and.
Um.
And they've totaled the totals.
Thirty total in this pile.
So am I supposed to record that now?
Yes, you're supposed to, yeah, in the minutes.
That's what you, I mean.
In, in the minute.
So before, we just used to pass it, and Denise said to me, that's a good plan, but you should record it in the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
The number of invoices and the total, she said you don't have to, you know.
The total and the number of invoices. And you have that one.
I go through it, but. Everybody's talking.
I got it, it's nine hundred sixty two dollars.
So from now on, what should probably be done is when you come to sign, do it then, just draw it on a piece of paper so you can put it in the minutes of the time, because they're all gonna be signing it instead of the here, we used to do.
Now, this one is assigned probably.
They're just gonna be bringing the sign one.
So this is from when, because I signed it.
That's actually the um, corrections that came over after I turned them in, and I just, I usually staple, staple it to the tops.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
The nine hundred sixty two dollar one has ten invoices.
So then do I need to?
Well, the point is, is that, you know, as, on a committee of three, they only require one signature, and two people don't know, and they say, oh, I thought we decided not to.
Well, you have to put the corrected number. Epic one.
She said, good due diligence, we should.
Yeah, this one is eight hundred fifty dollars.
No, she, I should write.
Taking in mind that.
So I still don't understand why we got this premium assistance under Medicaid and Children's Health Insurance Program.
Neither do I, but I just did what was supposed to, give every member a copy.
Oh, there's another one, alright, yes.
Are these copies like the, the staff receipts?
The staff receipts.
Did you get these?
Staff receipts.
So this is just to let us know that you received this?
It's not Ingram.
Because maybe, maybe they just got overzealous and just. Probably.
Well, what, what made me think it was, or the um, trustees, was it said member, not staff?
I'm sorry.
One five, six, eight, twelve. The staff is nineteen from Ingram, I don't have this kind of phone, is it all, um, so it's not. Nineteen. Twenty two, one, the one that's fifteen, sixty, eight, twelve.
I know.
I'm glad my husband won Medicare. Safety customer.
And then we were talking earlier about the, the exit interview, yes, and.
We didn't.
A letter to the selectmen.
Well, what, I, it, I mean, like the bylaws and everything else says that we employ the library director.
No, we don't employ it, the town employs.
So we also do.
That's, that's semantics.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we also, but we also do evaluations, and.
Mm-hmm.
But we're the only department in town that does.
Right, that's, that's fine, I'm just saying, we, we, we do do that, so it, it would be good, maybe now it's, I mean, a little late since we only have a few days, but
By our choice. Yeah.
It'd be good to, in the future for us to do so, because it, it's not just a final evaluation, it's more of, you know, what are the things that we could do better as, than, with the next person, or, you know, those things that we can get from whoever's exiting. For us would be the library director, cause that's the only person we kind of, according to the bylaws, employ.
That we employ, right, or we can't do.
Right. And it would be something that we could, not according to the original laws, we could do, we could do as an executive committee, meeting, because
The committee of bylaws going forward, so.
Yeah.
Who knows what's gonna happen when we start talking about this stuff, but it'd be good just to learn about what, you know, how does the trustees become a better body, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. Do you have seven?
Um, and we'll have to check to see whether that goes under executive.
Seven.
It, it would.
Yeah.
Right, do you have one thousand five hundred fifty nine forty eight?
Yeah, cause it's employing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Eight hundred fifty dollars.
Employ, yeah, personnel.
Personnel stuff.
One thousand six hundred.
And I think it's also good to point, point out like, how we word the, the bylaws too, wording has to be more.
Percent?
Right, that's, that's, yeah, that's.
One thousand five hundred ninety six thirty five?
Yep, that, that is what it would be, right.
One thousand five hundred sixty eight twelve?
Yep.
Okay, and the last one, nine hundred sixty two dollars?
Yep.
Okay, so should we set the date for that before?
Right, so we'll have to come in early to have that done before the meeting.
Six.
Uh, so I, I can commit to do in that.
Uh, I got it, I'm fine.
I'm gonna go back that way.
Okay. Do you wanna tell us?
So we have, one is thirty vouchers for one thousand five hundred ninety six dollars and thirty five cents, ten invoices for nine hundred and sixty two dollars, two invoices that were corrections for one thousand five hundred fifty nine forty eight, six invoices for eight hundred and fifty dollars, twenty two invoices for one thousand five sixty eight twelve, and five invoices for one thousand six sixty twenty five.
At July, not a invoice.
For anybody that didn't sign, did anybody that didn't sign them wanna see them before we give them back?
So, yeah, so.
And we're about eight, how much is for the, we're about.
Should be in the eighty percent, I believe.
No, ninety percent.
In the series.
The materials.
Which is fine, isn't it?
Well, no, that's what Natalie said they were trying to do, so.
Yeah, get it done.
Yeah, yeah, because we don't like to carry that, it's too nice.
No, no, we need a new term directory, just whatever.
Yeah, not happening.
Doesn't have, goes back into the general fund.
Alright, thank you.
Alright.
So we do on the walk through?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, we are.
So they don't adjourn before the walk through?
Yeah. Well, they, I don't, I don't.
So the walk through becomes part of the meeting. The walk through becomes part of the meeting until she adjourns the meeting.
It needs, we need to have forty eight hours of a post, another meeting, another meeting.
And it, and all they really can do is suggest to the, what a selectmen, they do it at this point.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
Unless we rewrite things.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that we could do it as a, since it's somebody that we work with.
I see.
To learn from that person about what can we do better next time, or what, what are the things that, you know, we can both kind of learn from it.
What's today?
What can build that right into our bylaws, if it comes up next?
Um. Monday would be the first that we'd be able to do it.
Right, which is.
If we posted it.
That's town meeting.
On last day. Uh, that's right.
That's, that's town meeting.
And it's town meeting. Timmy, birthday.
Are we gonna do the walk through that, or?
Yeah, so, well, we have to, so is anybody, does anybody wanna make a motion and, oh, is it on, uh?
I would be back.
The walk through doesn't have to be televised, it's a part of the meeting, or is it?
Well, he can walk through if he wants.
Well, it's part of the meeting to adjourn, Sally's welcome to walk through.
Um.
What can we adjourn and go through a walk through?
No.
No, it's part of the meeting, it's, it's on this agenda, to follow the agenda, and not walk.
As part of the meeting.
So, does anybody wanna change the policy and, and have, or not, there is no policy on uh, exit interviews?
I think first it has to be run by, you know, yeah, run by Denise, and she seems to have a lot of knowledge, and then build it into our bylaws.
To do an exit interview?
Mm-hmm, yeah, you really need to.
Cause it's, 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 doesn't have to be formal.
Build it into policy of bylaws, what's.
It could, it doesn't have to be formal, it could just be, let's figure out why, you know, learn why, what can we do better next time?
And it has to be executive session.
Yes, cause.
So it's still only forty eight hours.
Right.
Well, I'm not gonna be here on twenty eighth.
Oh, we're not here on the twenty.
Town meeting is the twenty eighth.
Town, town meeting is.
I think.
Do you have to, town meeting is?
It's seven, right. Did we hear from the fin come?
We're fine, unless, unless they call us, so.
We're fine, we're fine.
I, well, I assume no, it was just.
No, I asked, I asked Tom and he said we're fine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, could we do it early?
So to post something that has to be for Monday, which is town meeting, which most of us are gonna be at, that puts us onto Tuesday, and Natalie leaves on Monday.
Can't do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can go into the bylaws.
So we're all.
Unless you're willing to do that.
We did it before the town meeting, like it's six, six o'clock.
I mean, that's fine.
Cause it's not on your job, could that be considered in other?
I'm gonna be hitting the ground running, starting Tuesday morning.
Alright, so we'll have to just remember that for next time.
That can't be considered in other, in tonight, no.
But this started last, last summer, late last summer.
Yeah.
Think it's a quality of the town. Think it's a quality of the tiles?
I, it's, it's really this, this area and from what I understand, they're, they're fair, they're fairly new and, yeah, we, we have.
Yeah, they're not old.
The company that installed them, they've been here six times since last, last, um, August.
Oh, they have.
That's a hard traffic.
Trying to figure out what the issue was.
If we replace them, then I'm gonna match it.
Oh, we have some replacements, he doesn't, I mean, he doesn't even think that that, e- even if he puts replacements in, the same thing is gonna happen. So we're still trying to figure that out.
We thought we were so clever, having tiles.
Yeah, having tiles, we could do that too.
Well.
Did they, you had said, you had said at one point that they were doing a, the test and they did it?
So.
Yeah, a pH test and that came back kind of inconclusive, so they're coming back on Friday to do another one, they'll do one part, pretty much right where you're standing.
Okay.
And then they'll do one somewhere else down there that's not affected, that the, the carpet tiles aren't peaking and, um, it's a seventy two hour test, so he'll do it on Friday and then come back and grab the equipment and send it out to a lab on Monday. It's literally the second time that they've done that, but he's come at least a half dozen times since August to try and figure out, he's, you know, he's not charging us, he's just really, he's, he's very concerned about it.
Yeah, and, because i- i- is this really the only area, there's not any other place?
There's a couple over here too, um, over near the bubbler.
And. Oh, yeah.
Water. We had.
Yeah, but it looks, it's right here too.
It's some water here.
Yeah.
It's right along this, this seam, right, all the way.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And it's here, like, it, it's not really up, but you can see that it's gonna come up.
Here, like here.
Yeah.
And right here, nobody's even standing there, like you'd have to be like.
It is right at nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one of the, you know, I, I'm, I totally appreciate the fact that we go through the process, but, because it wasn't cheap, um, but some of the, some of the help might be, you know, having different sorts of carpet, you know, at the, at the entrance, like you were talking about the grate that we, you know, that's raised up, that you brush your feet differently, it's only a minor solution, so at least, at least it's being looked at, but.
Yeah.
Um, and the windows ha- that window hasn't leaked?
There's only been leaking from the windows and those tiles twice in the two years and two months I've been here.
That's amazing.
And it's only when it's wind driven rain coming from the east.
Excellent. And, um, and the w- windows and the.
Correct.
Team, right, okay.
Well, that seems to be.
And the TVs weren't working well, the copiers working well, what about shelving, anything going on there?
Yep. Mm-hmm. Shelving, shelving is fine.
Good. And, um, so the computers are getting more memory and the electricity was.
That is.
Did the Daniels do electricity here?
Yes, they did, yeah.
What did they do?
I think they updated the outlets and maybe added one.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I think that's.
I would ask them if it's, if it's. Because if it's not well, when you get these things, then that would make the tiles kind of.
Yeah, because it's, what, is that a clock?
Actually, the replacement was, uh, that's kind of different, but he doesn't think that's gonna happen.
Because I, I just went over by the clock and it's happening by the clock too.
Oh, not the clock, the sword and flag thing that cuts the tiles.
Oh, I had to notice that. Like some of the war.
Because we used to get, we used to get wet by that side door too.
I think it was a bolt drop in the room.
Oh.
Alright, so. What's happening, nothing in the staff room, children's room. So can we adjourn here in the mi- in the middle of the room?
Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
And any second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.